Mr. Garen, would you like to start off for us? Oh, never mind, hold on. We're going to approve the agenda. So moved, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we can move on to the minutes. Regular session for January 12th, January 21st, January 28th, January 12th, January 26th, and January 28th. Pam has been very busy.
I'll move all but January 28th.
Second.
All those in favor for all except January 28th?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Can I get a motion for January 28th?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recuse.
Mr. Andrews recuses. Now, we can move on to Mr. Garen.
I move to affirm and approve of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 74 for $393,086.25.
I can second all except for internally 1816, 1817, 1820, and 1830.
All those in favor for the payroll warrant except for 1816, 1817, 1820, and 1830?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. I'll move the payroll warrants 1816, 1817, 1820, and 1830?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recuse.
One recusal.
Withholding warrant number 78, I'm sorry, vendor warrant for 75, number 75 for $238,1967.77.
A second with an extension on 1852.
All those in favor for the vendor warrant with the exception of 1852, please?
Aye.
Aye. I'll move vendor warrant number 1852.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recuse.
One recusal.
Withholding warrant number 76 for $142,018.00.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
School warrant number 77 for $220,034.24.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Amelant's commitment from 11821 to 12421, $49,936.91.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Amelant's commitments from 125 through 131 for $30,796.67.87.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Move to pay KP Law PC Legals January for $1,269, and Attorney Lawrence Mayo Legal for January $1,437.50.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recuse.
One recusal.
I'd like to move to move around the commitments for vendor warrant number 79 for $58,110.14.
I'll second except for the internals 1905 and 1906, those are the legal bills.
With the exception of 1905 and 1906, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll move 1905 and 1906.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recuse.
One recusal.
Mobile home park fee number two for $5,160.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Does that bring us to the selectmen? Oh, that was the--
Selectmen's bills. Town hall electricity, $1,601.27. Insurance, $289. Selectman's expense account, $13.36. Selectman's expense account, $24.77. South Shore Women's Center, $3,500. Law account, $72.15. I'm sorry, $72.10. And that completes the presentation.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Garen. General Mayor, we're going to move on to Mr. Seelig.
We're not going to be meeting on Thursday because two of you won't be here. Troy has another obligation and Tom will not be available either. So, just very briefly on COVID, cases are down during the past 14 days, although there were six today. The state's encouraging the mass vaccination sites rather than local sites. They think they're more efficient. I know they're hearing from a number of communities, not just us, and not just South Shore, because I was on a webinar with EMMA early this afternoon, and there were plenty of people from plenty of parts of the state really saying, "Look, we're set up. We're ready to go. Just get us the vaccines. Just don't rely on Foxborough," for instance, or the large ones. But Bob Valeri was hearing the same thing later in the afternoon from Mass or Department of Public Health. So, we'll see whether-- Hey, I know that Jason and Bob and Susan have been working very hard on getting their 75-plus, but they're going to be about set up by the end of this week in the sense of everybody who wants to be vaccinated probably will have been vaccinated here in Halifax for 75 and up. They've worked very hard to get the word out to people via robo-calls and everything else, getting transportation if they need it. So, I know that Jason's working with Kingston and Plimpton, trying to set up a regional center. We'll see how everything works, but everybody's on board to do something if the crucial thing is getting the vaccines. Legal no report pitchers in the selectmen's meeting room. We've distributed two of them. The old Halifax pitcher map has gone over to the library and to the police station. We had received a Renaissance Award 20 some odd years ago when the center school was redone as the police station. So, that's gone to the police station. The question is, we still got at least two objects to distribute. Other departments, for instance, might want them. Pam, was there anybody else who was interested in--
There was one--
Yeah?
I don't know, like I said, we had talked about rehaling the other girls, and maybe the one with the hair in shock in the log somewhere, there's a couple slat walls, I bet where the elevator was right there, so maybe put down one there, but the one that wasn't holding--
This is the rededication of the newly renovated and extended town hall and restoration of the historic Pope's Tavern building for use by the Council on Aging and Historical Society. Maybe this should go over there.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that myself, the Council on Aging at Pope's Tavern. We've asked them if they have a spot for it, if they're interested in it. It's old enough that even the signatures have faded out on this.
Yeah, it's 35 or so years old.
Yeah, it's 87.
1987, I think.
Yeah.
So, will Sima wants to take that over--
Yeah, she thinks that they may have some use for it over there.
I agree.
That work for you guys?
Yep.
And then the other one will, um, time that I will give a name and hang it?
Okay.
Okay, so, that's if you want to hang with the other one.
Command hooks.
Oh, that's true.
Cultural Council recommending appointment of Colleen Fieramora as a, for a term expiring on February 8th, 2024. That would give us four people on there. I'm going to see if I can find a fifth person in the building because I'm running out of time to have a meeting and award the grants. We have more than enough money for all the applications, so it's not-- It will take about five minutes, but I'll find somebody and see about getting them appointed.
Okay.
Okay.
But if the board would vote, someone to--
Make a motion to appoint Colleen Fieramora to a term on the Cultural Council expiring on February 8th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Colleen.
Yes. Frank D'Addaro will be in a little bit later, supposedly in a couple of minutes, to talk about the T-Box and possibly even expansion of the license. Just pass over on Mr. Nazarella and ethics disclosures. I don't have any paperwork from him. Finness Committee appointments, Joseph Adrano is to meet with the board on February 2030. He wasn't able to come in tonight. He did with the meet with the FinCom and they didn't scare him enough, so he'll come in on the 23rd. Deborah Pasquale is to meet with the FinCom on the 22nd. At the Selectman's Board, I can set up an appointment for her to meet with the Selectman on the 23rd also. Is that reasonable?
I'm sorry.
Deborah Pasquale?
For--
For FinCom?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get that set up. Green Earth Cannabis, just finally got the draft done, which was following what the board's directive was, which was to take the Bud's Goods, HCA, do the cut and paste to change over to green cannabis, but also to change the establishment from one that was doing cultivation, manufacturing, and one that was doing retail. I've sent that off today, finally. We'll wait back to get a reply, you know, redline draft based on that starting point.
Good. Thank you for doing that amongst everything else we've got to do.
Gator Affiliation, I don't have a report. I have to work on that. Zoning and Flood Plane, FEMA's requiring an update to the town section of the zoning bylaw related to flood planes. I've given each of you a copy of the revised flood plane section. I'm recommending it be submitted to the planning board for a hearing and subsequent recommendation to town meeting in May. We need to get that done by July.
Is that the same map as last year that we passed over because of the--
Yes.
Issues? No changes to that?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
You have a motion?
I'm moving.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, unanimous.
Wage and Personnel Bylaw Update, I've submitted a request to the other nine Kees in our 10 towns for pay scales and job descriptions for the groups, grade six and seven positions. I need to send out a similar note about the clothing allowance for the board health agent. I need to work on options for dealing with incongruities in grades 11 through 14, and also increases in minimum wage for Massachusetts. And then also the proposed changes for compensation for the fire department call per sale. The board does need to decide how it wants to meet with the FinCom during the next two months to discuss these proposals and the others. I mean, you're going to have to have at some point some joint meetings, whether it's members of the board visiting FinCom or the FinCom coming to a selectmen's meeting. But I know, you know, I don't want FinCom to feel that they're out there, or you all, for that matter, hanging out there by yourselves trying to work all this out.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, they are meeting next Monday. They are meeting the 22nd. I can talk with them and say, you know, "Let's put this on the agenda." I'll specifically post for the board, you know, whoever can come, when they do a Zoom meeting, whoever can come and we can start the discussions on those areas. Maybe I'll have some information on some of these subjects by then.
Yeah, I think the 22nd's a good idea. Gentlemen?
It's a good day for me.
Okay, good, good.
Area 58, we're going to talk to Richard Gulart in a little while. And we are at 6:45. Mr. D'Addaro?
Perfect timing.
Good evening, everyone.
Is the mic on?
Well, it looks like it's on. Is it on?
Oh, no, Richard. Richard?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we have you at 6:45. D'Addaro's at 7:00. Right, sorry, I had my reversed.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, you're, we're good.
Good.
Good evening. How are you all?
Good, good.
So, I came, wanted to come to talk more or to give you an update on where things are regarding the contract. I guess you guys wanted to speak to me as well, so we-- Carver is just about ready to sign their next 10-year contract with Comcast. It has to go before the selectmen, at which point they will decide whether or not they're going to approve it. The contract will increase the percentage in Carver from 4.5% to the maximum of 5%. And also, for the first time in Carver's history, as far as I know, and as far as Ron knows, so probably the first time in history, other than startup capital, we'll be getting an annual capital amount from Comcast as well. An amount of $20,000 for the 10-year period.
Exclusive of what they're charging subscribers?
It's a separate thing entirely, yes. Yep. The Tri-Town contract is Halifax currently, sorry, Carver currently is having it looked up by KNP Law to see if there's anything that needs to be revised or basically to make sure that everything is, all the i's are dotted and the t's crossed at this point. They can share that with you, or you can also take a look at it, obviously.
Richard, probably the best thing is if they've got a draft or whatever when it's available, if it could be sent to me and I can send it to the board.
Fantastic.
And also the cable advisory folks are, you know, I want to make sure the Halifax members all see it.
Okay, absolutely. I did speak with Plimpton for the first time last night. Their meeting was via Zoom. And they seemed, they had a couple of concerns here and there, things that, basically operational things. The website had been down over the weekend. It's been migrated to a new hosting site. So, that problem should be solved. While I was speaking with them, I also wanted to let them know that if we are hosting the Zoom, and hosting the Zoom basically means that we're the host, create the link, and then send you along the link and can make one of you the co-host, we can cablecast the meetings live on Channel 15 in town as opposed to just waiting for the tape or watching it via Zoom. Additionally, there may be a change. We've got to, we've got to have a, either an internet connection here or a mobile hotspot. But would that technology has advanced to the point where we could have the Halifax Selectman meetings live even from here?
Now, will that cost any extra over the contract?
It wouldn't charge, it would be part of what we use, the money we get to make it happen. So, it wouldn't affect the town any further than that. Beyond that, the opening for the Board of Directors has potentially been filled. I guess he still hasn't come before you. The two Halifax representatives were comfortable with the person. His name is John Hanson. He grew up in Halifax. I forget what street. But he will be coming before you in the near future. He actually, many times in the past, particularly when we were in the, able to hold the meetings in the Selectman Meeting Room, was one of the videographers who had filmed this stuff for you. So, he is familiar with the operation and is interested in serving in that capacity. Only other thing I have on my end is-- Oh, we have been having some trouble getting the recorded videos from Halifax Elementary School and also Silver Lake. So, I don't know if there's anyone you could reach out to to help us get the link. Again, we could potentially host a Zoom and then put them live on the channel for those as well. The one additional thing is we just increased our number of Zoom accounts and now have a large meeting option, so we could host up to 500 people. Now, I doubt we're ever going to see that in Halifax, and it would take the entire population of Plimpton. But beyond that, it's just, it does give us more flexibility in doing things, particularly if there was a contentious school committee meeting, as sometimes those things could be happening right now. It would afford us the ability to allow that many people to Zoom in, and that would be positive for the town.
Currently, right now, the school setup is to use Google Meets. So, I got to figure out how to get you those files from Google Drive, I guess.
I am 95% certain that even Google Meets we could put on the channel live. It's really just a matter of, I mean, I'd have to look into it because we haven't done Google Meets. It's really just a matter of sending the signal, which only the host can do in Zoom, to the channel as well as recording it and sending it out via the internet. So, it's worked out pretty well for-- So far, only Carver has taken advantage of it, but they also were used to seeing meetings live, which neither of the other two towns have been using. The one that gains the most advantage from this in some ways is Plimpton, because Plimpton doesn't have a live drop. So theoretically, we could hook up and actually go live potentially from the meeting room downstairs and a couple of other locations in Halifax. If we ever wanted to, there's a way of making that happen. It may take a little work to get Comcast to actually get things in place, or not so much in place, but opened up. There's no such thing in Plimpton. So, this is really the first time there's even an option for them to go live is with this now being, the technology having advanced. I'll answer any questions you have.
I'm just curious, do we track YouTube hits, or is there a way--
Well, YouTube counts. If you go to the actual video--
You can see it on there?
Yeah, so for instance, we don't get a million people watching our meeting.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
We got the 25.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's all there. I mean, if you go to the Area 58 Halifax, where it lists all the videos, in fact, you don't have to go to the individual ones. It will say how many people have viewed the planning board from last Thursday, or the ZBA, or that isn't up yet, from last night, for instance.
Obviously, I haven't done it because I didn't want to relive any of them, but I just wanted to be--
Yeah, I mean, if we get three digits on any of them, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if there was any--
Yeah, if we get, you know--
Use of it.
More than a couple dozen probably is more than usual. So, but yeah, I, what it is, is another way for people, for people who don't have cable but do have Comcast or another internet provider, that's a way for them to be able to see it.
Okay, I'm not going to get into much.
Right, I understand.
My usual dissertation about subscribers paying for it, so. Anybody else? Anybody have a question?
There was a question from someone on the Zoom that asked about adding conservation and other meetings to the ability to record. Just didn't know--
Yeah, either with us hosting them or someone there hosting them. Obviously, we can't go live with them unless we're the host. And they can't go live to the channel if there's more than one thing at the same time. But we certainly can help them out, and if they want us to host them, we can still do that even without them going live and therefore have them, or they can record them and then send them to us, and we'll get them on the channel and on YouTube as well.
Are we still rationed on how many live recordings we can do?
No, at this point. I mean, if in person, it would come back to that more, but in this case, no.
So, let's walk through, there's maybe, you know, we do ZBA, we do planning right now. We do the school committee, we do finance, this is the Selectmen. So, we're left with Board of Health and ConCom. ConCom is downstairs. They're meeting right now, in fact, I believe.
In our, in our meeting room.
In our meeting, which means they, you could have, if we had a second person downstairs doing the tape, then we could do that one. Board of Health meets here on, usually, I don't know if it's Thursday, third, or second and fourth Wednesday nights. So, they're using this room. Again, the cameras already set up the soundboard, so it certainly would be doable.
Yeah, we can definitely do it. I mean, I think the likelihood is, until this all comes through anyway, we're not going to approach the 150 yet, 150, whatever number it is. I think it's 130, actually. We're not going to approach it anyway, and if it's necessary, we'll do it regardless, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, because I knew at one time there was only so many rationed out per town for--
There are, but we've never held that as a hard cap. If something needed to be covered, we did it, and there was no further.
I don't know, it feels like we had 130 meetings ourselves this past year.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
It does at times, yeah.
So, if the Selectmen said, "Yes, we'd like to do this," and mind you, technically, they're public meetings, but it'd be helpful to have the Board of Health and the ConCom say, "Yes, we want to be a part of this." What would be the process of getting them into the schedule?
Just letting me know, and I'll make sure we'll get someone here, be it staff or one of our videographers. Honestly, we are, we're more than welcome and more than pleased to cover any of the meetings the town has to help with the transparency and also inform the people. It's really our mission, so it's not a problem. We actually would look forward to doing so.
Well, that's good, especially now where people are reluctant to get out for obvious reasons.
Fortune.
Anything else?
Mr. Hanson, you lived in Hanson?
I lived in Carver.
No, John Hanson?
Yes, John Hanson.
He lives in Hanson?
No, he lives in Halifax, I think you said, right?
He grew up in Halifax. He actually lives currently in Carver.
Okay.
Well, but he'd be the Halifax representative?
That's the current plan, yeah, because Carver is all filled up and he would, I mean, it would be, again, it would be up to you guys to--
Well, I think, but--
Yeah, I--
I would think that the board might want to advertise the fact that we have the vacancy--
Okay.
And see who else might be interested.
Yes.
Something from Halifax, for instance.
Yeah. Dick and John have been trying to get some people for a while, Dick Wright and John Chabon, and have had no real success.
There's no, we'll advertise for a couple of weeks. We'll see what we get.
I agree. I mean, it would be preferable to have somebody from Halifax than from another town. No aspersions on any other town other than to represent our own town.
That absolutely makes sense.
Okay, so let's try that.
Okay.
Advertise it for a couple of weeks, and if he doesn't, ask him to just meet with us?
Yeah, and then see how that works out.
Okay.
Perfect. Very good.
I did have one question just about the contract aspect. Do you foresee any changes within the next cycle of being able to include the internet aspect of the bill to the V? Because everyone's dropping--
That's not his really work.
Does that come on the cable contract?
Right, so we, we didn't do this because of COVID last spring, but on an annual basis, the board can hold a hearing with someone from Comcast to come in. And that's when, to bring up exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what we--
All right. Thanks, Charlie.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, Richard does many things, but he's not responsible for the bills.
No, I'm not, and I wish I was sometimes, believe it.
Well, the dynamic's changing anyway. A lot of people are dropping the cable aspect.
Yeah, that's what I was--
And everybody's starting to stream. I'm even looking at it at this point because of content as much as anything, but--
We have to make our meeting more interesting.
The biggest thing, it's one of the things that's a problem for us as well in the future is because in a 1994 federal decision, I believe, we don't get any revenue directly from the internet. The only thing we get is the cable TV part, so if that goes away, so does our primary revenue source. The one thing Comcast is doing to try and remedy that is by making their platform easy access to all of the different streaming services as well.
They are doing that, and that would be the only reason I might consider keeping it, to be honest with you, because then I don't have to switch to a million different remotes and everything else.
You are not alone in that, and that's one of the things. Beyond that, for Halifax, Plimpton, and Carver, FiOS is not going to be an option. We've talked to them several times, and Verizon has no interest in communities of that size at this point. And behind the scenes, to some degree, have clearly stated they're getting, their plan is to get out of the television business anyway.
They want wireless. That's all they care about.
Yeah, and they've got, you know, the huge, they've got another money stream that they always were part of, whereas Comcast really has relied on the television side, so-- The one big difference we're seeing is Verizon is only offering five-year contracts to anyone they're renewing with for the cable access people, whereas Comcast is still going with the 10-year contracts.
Thing with FiOS, even when Verizon was pushing FiOS, they wanted high density. They weren't looking for rural areas where they had to service a lot of poles to get very few subscribers, so. Although it does run through Halifax to Plymouth, which is kind of weird, but--
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, the clock. Thank you, Mr. Garen. If there's no other questions. I think we're good. You're good?
Yeah, I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for updating us. Very much appreciated. And we will look forward to getting a copy of that contract so we can take a look at it.
Yeah, as soon as I have it, I'll back to you.
Thank you. It is now 7 o'clock, as Mr. Garen reminded me, and we have an appointment with Frank D'Addaro. Did I say that right?
That is correct.
Ah, there's one. All right, great.
Uh, it's actually one that you won't get right, too, so.
Frank, you'll want to get very close to that mic.
No problem at all.
You can pull, you can move it towards you.
Yeah, I wasn't going to touch anything if I don't have to. I was trying to try to give myself some space there. What I'll be, one of the discusses, I've already spoke to Charlie about this over email, is I am the owner of the T-Box, and-- in Halifax, the indoor golf facility bar, and now because of the COVID, we've had to transform into a restaurant because of the pandemic. So now we have a full food license and food service place. And I, you know, we've been in business for, I think it's our 12th year, and one thing we're finding is due to the golf limitations we have, our facility is very limited business time-wise, meaning we're very busy December through March, April, depending on the weather, and after that, we have nothing going on. Once in a while, we'll have a rainy day where people will come and play, or we'll have something going on. But because of the way we've been having to expand with our business over the years, we now have a full-service bar. We have a full-service food menu, and I was hoping to find out if, well, actually, I was wondering what it would take to expand to the parking lot outdoors and have something that would be more of a beer garden type thing for the summer months only. I couldn't really do it during the winter when it's cold. I was thinking more late spring, summer. But we, so I asked Charlie on Friday, basically, if, what would it take to get that ball rolling, and his first step was an informal discussion on the requirements before we even have a formal request or anything like that.
My first thought would be, how does this comply with ABC requirements? Have you had enough to go on that?
Well, when I contacted the ABCC, they saw this as a separate license because the two spaces aren't connected. Unlike the COVID situation for Grill 58, for instance, where their outdoor patio, whatever you want to call it, in the parking lot, is directly adjacent to the restaurant and specifically allowed under COVID. This is a different situation, second floor versus first floor, inside versus outside. Doesn't mean that you should not apply, but, you know...
Yeah, I think there'll be some challenges with the ABCC first, and if we do need a separate license, we can see if we can go that route, have to go that route. It'd be the same. I don't even know if they allow two licenses on the same property. I mean, there's some regulations there. But also, I could have some informal discussions and say, you know, I give them examples of other places where they have separated alcohol from, I mean, two separate bars. So I mean, I think it'd be, I think it would be, where it's upstairs and downstairs, there might have to be a discussion to show them why it has to be that way. And the advantage I would say we'd have in that discussion is our upstairs won't be being used that much just for, you know, our services. During the summer, when one's active, the other won't be almost, but the other will be used. It just won't be, there'll only be one service area through one period of time. So we'll see.
I imagine during the summer months, you're getting use on bad weather days, that type of thing.
Yeah, I mean, once in a while. I mean, our sales go from, we rent out traditionally somewhere around probably 50 to 60 hours a day when it's busy during the winter, and then when it's not busy during the, I mean, in our primary days, to 20 hours a day. And then in the summer months, the average is one hour a week, two hours a week. I mean, it's a big difference, yeah.
The other question that comes to mind is, you should also talk to the Planning Board.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I actually contacted the Board of Health and asked for an outline of who I should be talking to, and after you, the Selectmen, all of the Selectmen here, the question, the Zex is zoning. We didn't even get to the Board of Health and the fire until everything's set up. First, we have to get approval before we can even do that. He actually, the gentleman, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but he laid out a really nice outline of what I'll have to do. Yes, yes. He laid out a real nice outline of what I'd have to do. So this is where, this is the first step was just, even if it's, you know, what, what steps would you like to see taken first before I come in front of you and ask before? But obviously, the ABCC is the most important because we have to make sure...
Your Board of Health, you already alluded to, but Planning Board's going to be an important element in this. Parking, as I recall, was an issue in terms of spaces, and I think they kind of squeaked them in, and I think some of them are getting used up now with the outdoor thing. So I'm not saying that they won't...
No, understandable.
Work with you. I'm just saying that that's an area...
Or they could even just help me know what the requirements are if we meet them.
Where are you thinking of having that?
Sure. I actually, is it okay? I got kind of a... It's going to be on the opposite side of the roof, because that's where our location is. We were actually there during the beginning, Grill 58, and this is more of a, right next to our, there's a grassy knoll for a lot of the term that we're...
Grassy knoll, that's a...
Yeah, I think a lot of the grass location.
So you're selling shots, is what you're saying?
I don't know. I don't want shots. I was going to prepare the news for me. I really want to be more draftier in my case with food. Because I'm heading out, it consists of pine, bough, and things like that. I want to expand on that. Eventually, I would like it if I could even have a, you know, more of a, I want it to be daytime-only thing, really nothing at night is my, I mean, maybe no later than eight, nine o'clock, but I don't want it to be anything at night, because I need it to be, I need it to be kind of small just by the way it is. So I don't see why, I don't want it to be a 100-person place where everybody's hanging out.
This is kind of over by the flagpole, right?
Yes, right near the flagpole. Right near the, we'd actually have use of, I have an in with the owners of the building since he's my father, so I can, I can use the garage without an issue, which actually would be a good power source and place to put the bathrooms and things like that.
So I guess my question would be zoning, you taking up parking spaces, would that not eliminate them of being, right?
Yeah, that's why I brought up the Planning Board, because that's really where that's taken.
I do think the nice part about where that is, is I would be taking up the parking spaces that will currently very rarely get used except for when the liquor store is really busy. That was the, that was the good, so we, I mean, we can obviously go through the numbers, but the, that parking space in front of the top yellow circle, those get, those are not the most ideal place. Actually, people don't like to park there.
Well, some of the parking spaces may now have designation for the T-Box that you're not going to use in the months that you're renting anyway.
Exactly, yep.
And that's something, you know, to bring up to the Planning Board.
Yep, exactly, because it's the same business. They'll just be using them. We'll just be using them for a different spot.
Stairs downstairs.
Exactly. Thank you. I appreciate that insight. But yeah, more, I mean, I've done preliminary cost, you know, cost vetting and things like that. I really, I mean, I'm going to have an issue with anyways with bathrooms. So that was, that's going to be a big hurdle to get over. So I don't even, I don't know what the rules are going to be. I don't know where I can get them from and all those kind of things. So there's still a lot where I am. I just wanted to know what your thoughts, your gentleman's thoughts were on where I should go directionally.
Well, I don't think you're under special permit, so I don't think you need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, but definitely the Planning Board. Board of Health is a given. And then, you know, fire?
Yep. Well, yeah, fire and health, obviously.
Now, are you looking to put up tents? Are you looking to put up a building? What are you looking to do?
My initial thoughts, I'm starting to start out small. Umbrellas in the beginning with picnic tables, and rainy weather, we just won't open. It's really just going to be dependent on the weather. Maybe we can grow a tent someday or an overhead thing, but I haven't quite, I think I want to have the ability to put everything into a shed or a container that actually will be the service area, pull it out, I mean, leave the picnic tables out, obviously, but, you know, all the equipment open up and only be, and I'm only really looking for business Thursday through Sunday. I don't really want to be, I don't want it to be a seven-day-a-week hangout. I really want it to be something that's nice on the weekend. People can come by for tonight's day and...
Something to do.
Something to do. And I think we're, I think we're at an advantage with the current pandemic, because if we open up under those rules, it'll be kind of restrictive anyways. So it'll almost be like, well, if we can't fit somebody in, people are getting used to being moved around a little. So I actually am trying to use that to our advantage there.
Depending on what you're trying to do for structures and/or whatever for rolling out your service, you might, just to make sure that there's no crossover, talk to the building inspector.
Yep.
I don't, it doesn't sound like you've got any building issues, but depending on how you actually do it, you might want to just bounce it off them.
Not a problem, because that would hurt for a phone call just to make sure that he might be, you know, say, no, you're fine, don't worry about it, or this is what I need you to do.
Anything else? Anybody?
I'm sorry.
Great. So, all right, I'll probably be on a, I'll probably be in a future meeting then.
Great, thank you.
Hopefully, a little more progress.
All righty.
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Be careful out there.
Oh, yes. Actually, it's just starting to kind of bring a little bit as it's walking in. So it's got to be slick.
And frosty in the morning. Great.
So I have a couple of things left on the list here. Zoning Economic Development Act, that about a month ago now, the governor had signed legislation on a, it was sort of an omnibus bill on a number of subjects, but included changes in Chapter 48, the state's zoning law. But there's no immediate need for any changes locally. I've notified the Planning Board and the ZBA that the statute does change the voting requirements for approval of certain bylaws and special permits, but also a lack of high-density residential zoning near the rail station may affect future grant opportunities for the town, and there are changes in definitions in Chapter 48 that may conflict with the town's definition. So it's nothing immediate we have to do, but for instance, if someone came in for an accessory apartment, in-law, whatever, and the accessory use structure over here is the Chapter 48, and we've got a different definition, are they coming in under the Chapter 48 definition? Are they coming in under ours? If we said no, or we said yes under ours, could someone appeal saying, well, they made the bad decision because it's, here's the state's definition? So I've informed them of this, and it's, unless the board tells you to do something else, unlike with the floodplain, where we do need to get something done, unless the board tells me to do something with it, it's with them at this point. But like I said, there's no immediate need to do anything. I'm not, wouldn't necessarily say that they have to get something done for this coming May, but they have the material. I sent them an analysis from KP Law, also from the Department of Housing and Community Development on the high-density residential area zoning. So they have the information. If they needed to get a copy of the actual changes, I believe I gave them a link to that also.
On the height, on the height, yeah, the high density, that's 15 units per acre.
Per acre, right, yeah.
So maybe...
Yeah, high density, definitely.
Maybe they could do one acre and have 14 acres around for the center systems that they're going to need.
Well, we'll see what happens in that. Department of Housing and Community Development needs to propagate regulations or guidance based, because the legislature wasn't specific as to how big an area has to be zoned, things like that. So we'll wait to see what happens.
And we can't count them a little farther?
No, it's not near the rail station. It has to be within a half-mile of the rail station.
And it's nice that they're cutting the service now and then adding all these requirements? So they're going to move people out here and then not give them service into Boston?
Well, that's been going on since they opened. It's always been sporadic. It keeps getting cut, then no service on the weekends. Anyway, that's another thing for another day.
One of the comments on here is Twin Lakes is within a half-mile. The thing, as I mentioned longer, what's a half a mile? If it's road, it isn't. If it's bird flying, maybe it is, but we'll see what they say. On the regional dispatch, sorry, Traffic Safety Committee, new line item for school, traffic lights will be proposed by the Traffic Safety Committee to add into the general budget line items. Now, it's specifically, I guess, for both the school safety lights and what the crosswalks, Tom?
Yes.
Is the idea? So maintenance of the light, of the lighting and...
And potential hazard areas for lighted stop signs, for instance, Pine Street across 106, which is a terrible spot.
Mm-hmm. Okay. There weren't any speed limits or size changes recommended for the Home Street, Route 36. I brought it up about the thickly settled, so that's where that went. Regional Dispatch, I may have mentioned this earlier, but just to confirm, the assessment will be stable for this coming year for '22. We'll save the $150,000 plus the additional money we always set aside for equipment and repairs, but we do expect the assessment to increase during fiscal '23, but we'll get there. Also, we'll have a new agreement, even if it's one year for this coming year, we'll have a new memorandum of standing for, with the district, because they're trying to get into a particular enterprise fund for the district, even though it's still going to be run through Duxbury. And as part of that, they'll sign new agreements with various towns that are in that. And then I just need to go in briefly to executive session on negotiations, but not legal matters.
Charlie, did we do the ambulance abatement?
I missed that. Yeah, I'm sorry. Put that in my notes. So the amount, I think, is that in the agenda, the amount?
Yeah, the amount is $78,872.05.
Thank you.
Did I make a motion to make the abatement for that amount?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I kept thinking we tanned it when we did the commitment, but that was the abatement.
I move to go to the executive session.
What matters we doing?
We're going to be doing the patrol officer negotiations and the mixed unit negotiations.
Okay.
So in that...
As discussing strategy, we respect a litigation, whoop, not litigation, because we're not going for litigation.
Union negotiations.
For union negotiations, and an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town.
A second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Yes.
Mr. Moise, yes? All right, folks. Thank you. We're going into executive session to take care of some business. We will not be conducting any business. When we come out of executive session, we will just adjourn. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Stay safe.